I don't want to be getting confused, like, you know. To tell the truth.
Mark and I look a lot alike.
It was a beautiful thing.
Hope you had an end.
Sometimes everybody gets a foot. I'm looking out in the audience.
Got Schwarzenegger and DeVito?
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the July 16, 2018 Crestille City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher.
Here.
Barbara Schler.
Here.
Claudia Giselle.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Tom Inman.
Okay, I did receive emails and phone calls from Alderwoman Giselle and Alderman Albert, so they are at prior commitments this evening, so they are excused for this evening's meeting. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on July 2, 2018. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Schler, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the July 2 city council meetings? Roll call, please.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You have before you the minutes of the city council work session held on June 25, 2018. Motion would be in order.
So moved, just presented.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Inman. Questions or comments in regards to the work session minutes on June 25, 2018? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you have before you the minutes of the city council work session held on July 9, July 9, 2018. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the work session minutes held on July 9, 2018. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, as part of our business promotion this evening, we have a new business in the city of Crestille which opened about three weeks ago. We had a grand opening at the location, so I would like to introduce Mr. Peter Sakaris, who is here, the manager, manager and owner of Tracy's Bistro, which is located at 22 Plainfield Road. And Pete, please to the podium, and the time is yours for a business promotion for your new business and what you would like to share with our listening audience.
Look right here. Yeah, like Mayor said, we're at 222 Plainfield Road. The name is Tracy's. It's a bistro. We serve finger foods. We have a lot of snacks, and we have beer, wine, mixed drinks, and we also have the gaming machines in there. It's a relaxed atmosphere that we invite people to come in, enjoy your day, you know, come in during the day, come in after work. You can relax, have a couple of drinks, have some finger foods. We have plenty of snacks, and just relax and enjoy it, and maybe play some games if you want to. So, some of the promotions that we have, we just started today. There's a Jersey giveaway, it's Dwyane Wade. So we're doing for the month, from, I think today's the 16th, till August 16th. Every time you come in, you can fill in a ticket, drop it into the raffle box, and at the end of, on August 16th, we'll be able to pull one of the tickets, and whoever gets the winning ticket gets a Dwyane Wade jersey. So, we do stuff like that all the time. We just had a barbecue giveaway at all the other stores. We were a little bit late on this store. We didn't open on time to do it, so, but, you know, next July, we'll be doing stuff like that. But we do stuff like that probably every other month. So, some of the other specials that we have is every Sunday, we have $4 mimosas. So, if you like your mimosas, come in, have a mimosa. Every other Monday, we have double punch days, so we have punch tickets that when you come in, you punch it in. After 10 times that you visit, you get $5, or $10 free play for the machines. We also have every Thursday is dollar domestic beers. And then, like I said, we did the Jersey giveaway. Our hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Friday and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and then Sundays, we go from 10:00 in the morning till midnight. So, like I said, come by, it's just a relaxed atmosphere. We've done, we built it up beautifully. We, you know, we invite everybody to come out and check it out and enjoy, and just have a good time over there.
And I believe this is our sixth bistro in the city. They're scattered throughout the entire city. They're very popular, I will say that, but I want to compliment you and your partner, Tim, on a fantastic job, the way you did on the remodeling in there. It looks totally different than the previous build, the previous business that was in there. So, thanks to you guys. I know you own several of these bistros throughout the surrounding communities all around here, so you know what you're doing. I know that they're very popular, and, you know, they've been, they've been very good for the city of Crestille also. So, congratulations to you guys.
Thank you. And we appreciate, I want to say thank you to the council and the city of Crestille for allowing us to open it up over there and, you know, give us the right to do it. We appreciate that. And everyone's been super helpful, so.
And you have food also, correct?
Yeah, we got finger foods, you know, we got a menu over there that you could check out. It's fairly priced. You want to come in, sit down, you know, just kind of a mix of stuff. We have little slingers, we have little, little, like mini corn dogs, stuff like that. And we're going to be introducing, as the, as the months go on, we'll see what people are asking for. That's usually how we do it. We have kind of a, a little bit of a menu for now, and then whatever people kind of push for, or what they like, we always ask them. That's where we start incorporating. So, it's just every store kind of has a different kind of flow for that.
Okay, well, I will open it up for questions or comments from council.
Well, I was there, and everything was lovely, but the main thing that I want to thank you about is the choice of lime green as your color, because, as we all know, that's the best color in the whole world.
I'm glad.
And it looked gorgeous. And your, your partner, Tim, told me that that's his favorite color.
Yeah.
And that his whole basement is that color. I said, "My whole main floor is that color." So, put that house together, it'd be awesome.
He's, yeah, he's a huge fan of it. I know he's, like, it's his own special color that he came up with, that he blended, so loves it. I love green, too. I'm a big fan of it, so.
Very nice. Thank you. It was a very nice day. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Hope you're there for a long time, and, you know, we already talked about the Weber Road corridor, so.
Oh, yeah. We're in discussions.
Whenever you want to sit, whenever you want to talk.
Yeah, for sure.
The gentleman on the end there is always available.
Good guy.
Yes, all right. Thanks, man.
See you later.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to the agenda, our city administrator, Heather Maguire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items for approval this evening, however, for the public's knowledge, we will hold a work session on July 23. Current work session topics include IPPFA presentation, as well as fireworks ordinances, with additional topics currently being worked on. I would be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Any questions of city administrator?
Yeah, Heather, where are we at with 1917 Burry Circle?
We are actually still in the court process right now, running through, getting the search warrant to go in and check out the property.
It's real discouraging. This has been going well on over two years, and, I mean, simple things like even cleaning up brush that's by, on the edge of the driveway, hasn't been done. They've never shown up for anything that was administrative-wise with the city, you know, so, I mean, I don't know what we're dragging for.
Sure, I'm happy to follow up with you on this, that there's some things we don't really want to disclose here in the open session.
All right, please do. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on, Public Works Department, our interim director of Public Works, Mr. Jim Egan. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight on the agenda, we've got a couple items to start with that are related to hiring new personnel. I'll turn it over to Greg, the Director of City Services, to review these first two items.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The first item is the COPS and FIRE agreement. Staff is looking to seek approval for the agreement with COPS and FIRE, so that they can do the agility testing, scoring at the, at the Tinley Park Training Facility on July 28th. Their cost is $35 per applicant. We have whittled the list down to 33 applicants, so our total cost will be around $1,155. That's if everybody shows up. So, there's bound to be a couple of folks that don't show up to the, to the agility testing. COPS and FIRE did a good job for us in 2015, and we expect good results this time around, so we recommend approval of that contract.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Schler for the COPS and FIRE physical agility testing agreement. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Tinley Park Training Facility Agreement. This is the agreement that we will work with Tinley Park to complete the physical agility testing at their training site. There is an $800 ambulatory cost associated with the training, or with the site for use of it. We did this back in 2015. They have the adequate space, they have the adequate equipment for us to conduct the agility test, so we recommend approval of the agreement with Tinley Park.
So moved, just presented.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Inman for the Tinley Park Training Facility Agreement. Both of these, this one and the previous one, was discussed at the July 9 work session, and this is for the, the testing to create the list for the public works laborers. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a word of contract for the Marlboro Lane Water Main Improvement Project. This contract will replace the water main on Marlboro Lane from Frederick Street to Inner Circle Drive. The water main's a six-inch, and it's at a high failure rate, to be replaced with the new eight-inch water main. We advertise in Illinois Department of Transportation Construction Bulletin on June 7. Received five bids for the project. The low bidder, PT Farrell Construction Company, had a bid of $895,730.83. That was slightly higher than the engineer's estimate, but we're recommending to award to the low bidder, PT Farrell Construction Company. This was reviewed at the last work session meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher for the Marlboro Lane Water Main Improvement Project. It was $20,000, approximately higher than the engineer's estimate. This will be from Frederick to Inner Circle on Marlboro Lane, new water main, complete street replacement. This is our major project for this year. Motion has been made and seconded. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next two items on the agenda that we have this evening are sewer system-related items, and those are handled by Mark, Director of Water and Wastewater. Let's move to Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you is a design and construction contract with Robinson Engineering for the 2018 sanitary manhole rehabilitation project. This year, we have enough manholes to rehabilitate for a second year of completely doing all manholes. The scope of services includes manhole inspections, preparation of plans and specs, and construction engineering. Public Works Department is asking for approval of a contract for not to exceed amount with Robinson Engineering for $37,000.
And as I asked you at the work session, all of these locations, everything will be recorded within our system.
Is there GIS now?
Yes, for future reference. So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Schler for 2018 sanitary manhole rehabilitation project design and construction contract. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item you have in front of you is the pre-treatment program professional services contract. As you know, we sent our local limit study to the US EPA Region 5 last year. We collected samples and wrote our study. The next step in the process is to begin preparation of the pre-treatment ordinance, completion and assessment of the industrial user survey, which was just turned in, and preparation of an enforcement response plan. All three of these things would be a total not-to-exceed contract for $74,000 with Robinson Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Boucher, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a pre-treatment program professional services contract with Robinson Engineering, not to exceed $74,000. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's all the items that we have for Public Works this evening. We can address any questions that we have.
Well, I have a question and a comment. First of all, Mark, I want to thank you, as always. You are always very passionate about everything. You always explain things very well for us and the viewers at home, and I truly appreciate that. Your passion always shows, and that's a wonderful trait. Thank you for that. And then my question is, what was going on on Theodore Street on Saturday? The road was closed, our public works was over there?
Yeah, that was, there was a sewer backup at Marichcas. We had national power routing to clean the city sewer and make sure that there was no backup, backup related to the flow of that sewer, and that's why we had a lane closed with national power routing's equipment there to clean our sewer.
Was the backup in our sewer or theirs?
It was, there was some grease in our sewer. In order to ensure there were no other backups and problems with other businesses and homes, we wanted to make sure that our sanitary sewer system was clean. There was evidence of grease in the manhole, so we wanted to ensure that that wasn't going to cause any problems with anybody else.
Well, where would the grease come from?
The grease, we believe, came from the restaurant Marichcas.
Is that the normal procedure?
Well, Marichcas had their line cleaned, but yes, that would be our, our normal procedure. We have to run a power rod that jets water at a high pressure to clean the sewer pipe, and then vac that material out of the sewer, so it doesn't affect anything downstream. But that is, that is the response we would take to clear a blockage in a sewer pipe.
Thank you.
Sure.
Blockage of that nature, we need to make sure that it doesn't create another blockage downstream, and make sure that the line's open.
It's been a long, it's been a long time problem. It will be addressed.
I mean, they're not allowed to put any grease down the sanitary sewer, are they?
Grease should not be flowing to the sanitary sewer.
That's what I thought, so.
That was my question. How did the grease get there?
Improperly sized grease trap might be the, the reason.
Now, is that something our building inspector can go in there and look and check and make sure that it's up to code and?
Correct, yes. That is something we would be able to do through our code enforcement.
All right. Any other questions?
Is that something we're going to do?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on, Community Development Department, our Economic Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening, but would like to note that the second quarter economic development report is in your packet this evening. And with that, I will answer any questions or address any concerns.
Any questions of economic development? Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Police Department, we have Deputy Chief Brad Hertzman here this evening. Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The police report for city council is on file. We have nothing further for the meeting tonight than I'd be able to answer any questions.
Questions of Police Department? Okay, thanks, Brad. Moving on, the mayor's report. Tonight, we have on the agenda item the appointment of Director of Public Works. And let me start off with some opening comments here first. First, I'm very excited that we are going to have a permanent Director of Public Works. I will tell you that we went through GOV-HR. We received a list of 32 applicants from GOV-HR. Several of those applicants were from out of the state of Illinois. Out of that 32, a list of 12 candidates that met all the requirements was brought before the city from the application that was listed. Out of the 12 candidates, the city chose five individuals to be interviewed, and during the first round of interviews, those five were interviewed by our city administrator, Heather Maguire, our assistant city administrator, Megan Flara, and our city engineer, Dave Vanderbilt. Out of those five, two, two candidates were brought back for a second round of interviews, one on June 26th and one on June 27th. The second round of interviews included myself, our city administrator, Heather Maguire, and our assistant city administrator, Megan Flara. Out of those two candidates, it was a unanimous decision by the three of us to proceed with Mr. Tom Miggitts. Tom was then brought back on July 3rd. He was brought back for a tour of the city, our facilities, both treatment plants, and he was, offered a conditional offer of employment. At that point in time, then, we began the background checks, the reference checks, and the, all the other testings that are involved, which I will say that all came back. All came back with high remarks in regards to the references, and all passed. All the background checks came back that everything passed and was in order. Tom was then brought before city council at a work session at the July 9 meeting, and at that work session, it was a meet and greet in which city council had his resume and was able to ask him any questions. With that, we offered the position to Tom for full-time employment here at the city of Crestille. I will say that during the second round of interview, the one that I was involved in, I will tell you that Tom Miggitts gave a great interview and a very, had a very impressive resume. In regards to his resume, I will say that he worked 27 years for the city of Elgin. He worked in a variety of positions, starting as a laborer, and then for the past 23 years, he rose through the ranks and he became the public works supervisor. So he stayed in the city of Elgin for 23 years. Then he moved on to the city of Woodstock, where he has been employed for the last three years, and he served, he served the city of Woodstock as the Assistant Director of Public Works. When you look at his resume, as I said, it's very impressive. He's going to bring to the city of Crestille a wealth of experience, work ethic, and job experience to our city. He has experience in both the street side of Public Works, and he has experience in the water and sewer side of Public Works through his 26 years of experience between the city of Elgin and the city of Woodstock. In regards to his education, again, very impressive. He has an associate's degree in human resource management. He has a bachelor's degree in public administration, and he's currently working on his master's degree in public administration. As you will find out in a few minutes here, he's very well spoken. He's very articulate in his speech. His personality is one thing that did impress me. He's, he has a very even demeanor. He has a very even keel, and it doesn't seem like a whole lot of things get him rattled, which in my mind is very impressive. He showed an awful amount over the past few weeks here of self-confidence, but that confidence is not egotistical. That is another thing that I admired in him. He is flexible, and he is adaptable in his work ethic. He appears to be well organized. He has a professional work ethic that I think will be an improvement for our city. He is a well-rounded individual, and I believe that he is going to be a good fit for the city of Crestille for many years to come. The other thing that I found to be very impressive is that he was very eager to have this position in the city of Crestille. And with his work ethics and his work experience, I believe that he will be a tremendous asset as this city is in one of our growth spurts, both economically. You can see from earlier, what we did today has been a process over the last 10 years to be very proactive with our infrastructure, which is aging after we're almost 60 years old here now. So, we have been very proactive with our infrastructure in regards to water and sewer, and we will continue to do that. I believe that he will bring with him the ability to raise the level of professionalism, and our level of communication with our residents will improve dramatically, and that was one of the items that we spoke about during the interview process. So I will tell you, Tom, that I have high expectations of you, but I am confident that you will meet and exceed all of my expectations. I believe that you are the right choice for this city. You have worked your way through the ranks, and I believe that right now you are ready to become a Director of Public Works in the city of Crestille. With that, you have before you, ladies and gentlemen, his resume again for your review over the weekend. You also have his letter, his offer of employment, conditional offer of employment with the city. I will tell you that the, when the advertisement was made by GOV-HR, salary was posted at plus or minus $110,000. The conditional offer, based on his, his work experience and his work ethic, the offer is $118,000 and all the standard benefits, which has been agreed to and signed to, signed by Tom Miggitts. Starting date would be July 23rd. He has worked with the city of Woodstock to give them the proper notification. We did, we did have this entire discussion last week at the work session, so it is my recommendation, my high recommendation, that we hire Mr. Tom Miggitts as our Director of Public Works for the city of Crestille, and I would ask for a motion. So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Inman, seconded by Alderwoman Schler. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Barbara Sclare.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, young man. If you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself to the residents of the city of Crest Hill.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity and your confidence in my abilities and the work that we have to do together. I appreciate the support that the city has put behind public works and the infrastructure needs that have been met, and I look forward to working with staff to further those approaches. I also want to thank you, Mayor, for your kind comments, very gracious. Appreciate it, thank you. And I also would like to point out that staff along this whole opportunity has been second to none as far as professionalism, communication, and awareness of other issues. So I thank you very much for all those. Look forward to serving the citizens of Crest Hill and doing some great things together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I know you have your family here. Welcome to the city of Crest Hill also. Like I said, I think this is going to be a tremendous fit for the city of Crest Hill. So I will open it up for questions or comments. Anybody would like to share from City Council?
Thank you. Nice resume. Great to see you work, and enjoy having you with us.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Welcome to the city of Crest Hill and hope you have a long, prosperous future here with us.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, and good luck in the job, and I'm sure you'll do fine, and I'm looking forward to you being here.
Well, welcome to the city. As you can hear, you've got quite a task ahead of you, so be looking forward to seeing you achieve all these things for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome to the city and hope to see a lot of great things come from your department.
Thank you.
Welcome, Tom. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, your starting date is July 23rd.
Yes, sir.
We will expect to see you here.
Right, ma'am.
All right. With that, I would like to extend my thanks to Jim Egan. Jim Egan recently retired from the city of Joliet. We are in a transition period here. Jim went through the process, and he's, he's been with us a little, about two months now, filling in as Public Works Director, so I want to thank you for giving us that opportunity and for you to be here. Again, you walked into a transition, transitionary time in the city of Crest Hill, so I just want to thank you for everything that you did for us, and, you know, good luck with all your future endeavors also.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, that is it for the mayor. You do have a couple memos in your packet. We did receive a thank you from Czechoslovakian American Congress for the Ledece ceremony that was held on July, or June 10th, for the 76th year in the city of Crest Hill. So we thank them for that. I will open it up for any questions you have of the mayor. Hearing none, we'll move on to our Clerk's Report. Our City Clerk, Vicki Hackney. Good evening, Vicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing on the agenda this evening. There is an update in your packet regarding business license renewal status. I will keep you advised of that up to the date of August 3rd, when they're finally due in. And any questions at the Clerk's office, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions of the Clerk? Thanks, Vick.
Thanks, Ray.
Just one other thing I forgot, under the Mayor's Report, so I got to backtrack.
Oh, you don't get to go back, I'm sorry.
I got to go backwards. I hope that everybody has seen the improvements down on Broadway Street by the viaduct. I certainly want to extend a thank you to Rich Paciniak and the college seasonal help that went down there and cleaned up most of that property that was on state property. But we all know the woes that the city, the state of Illinois has right now, so, you know, it either gets cleaned up or it stays looking the way it is. So I want to say thanks for all the work that they did down there, because that was a tremendous improvement along that fence line on the east side of Broadway Street. All the weeds have been pulled out of the flower beds by the viaduct, and there has been some new mulch put down, so I thank them for doing all of that also, and I think that it looks much better down on Broadway Street now than it did earlier in the season when we had all the rain. It was probably best that we waited until now, when the rain stopped a little bit, so the mulch will hold in place on the incline of the hills there, especially on the south side of the viaduct. The other thing that I wanted to mention, if you noticed, that the city sign is gone from out front. That was approved a few work sessions back, and that sign has been removed. The material was scrapped by the city, and we recouped about $140, I believe it was, for the scrap from that sign. So the new city sign that will match the other ones that are our entryways to the city is going to be put in very shortly. There will be some new landscaping there, some new electrical work, and hopefully we'll have that done in the next couple of weeks, and everything will look brand-new at the intersection right out of City Hall here with the new sign. Okay? We'll go back to the agenda items. Our Treasurer's Report, our City Treasurer, Glenn Cocklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from June 25, 2018 through July 8 of 2018 in the amount of $214,000, excuse me, $214,234.07. I seek your approval on our list of bills. It totals $583,026.07.
Some move just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Boucher. Questions or comments in regards to the list of bills? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Excuse me, Barbara Sclare.
Yes.
Marco Colletti-Pietro.
Yes.
Tom Inman.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Is there any questions?
Questions of our City Treasurer?
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business? We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business? Anybody? Committee, committee liaison reports, anyone?
Yes, yes. You can hold that for me? Sure, you can hold that. This is our last shot at advertising the city picnic, I believe. And once again, I'd like to remind everyone, it'll be Sunday, August 5th, at St. Joe's Park from noon until 10:00. We have four bands, ARA Strung Out, 45 RPM Band, and the Raycon Car Band. We are going to have the usual fun activities for the children, along with the police, and the Julia Masons doing the fingerprinting and the children's DNA, which is really important. If you have young children, it's free. Come take advantage of it while you're there, having a good time. Heaven forbid you ever need it, but if you do, you have it. It's a wonderful tool. We're also going to have a special performance by the Jabberwocky Marionettes. That's a new thing this year, so I'm very excited about that. We're going to have Bingo. The Crest Hill Women's Civic League is doing bake sale. And as many things as I can squeeze into the last few weeks to add to it, I will certainly do that, but I look forward to everybody coming and having a great time. It's always a wonderful, wonderful day, and hopefully the weather will be cooperative again this year for us. If anybody has any questions, of course, contact me. I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you. Thank you, Marco. You do a great care of the area.
Anybody else? Committee liaisons? Okay, moving on, City Council comments. Positive City Council comments, anything you'd like to share with the listening audience or your constituents? We'll begin with Word 1 tonight. Alderman Dyke?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Boucher?
Congratulations, Tom. Nice to have you aboard, and Jim, thank you very much for what you've done for the city the last few months. Thank you.
Word 2, Alderwoman Sclare?
I also wanted to welcome you to the city. Good luck with joining us. And then also, I wanted to remind the residents of July 31st at 6 o'clock at the park on Borio for a meet and greet with the police, and I believe it'll be a nice event, and Claudia and I both look forward to seeing you there.
Word 3, Alderwoman Overland?
Well, I had a wonderful opportunity today. I was invited by Senator Jennifer Bertino-Tarrant and Representative Natalie Manley to a Women's Rights and Resistance brunch in Chicago. It was a wonderful day. U.S. Senator Kirsten Gillibrand was there, and the State's Attorney for Cook County, Kim Fox, J.B. Pritzker, and Juliana Stratten were there. The Kwame Raoul and Michael Ferricks, our State Treasurer, they were all there, and it was all about how much power women can now yield, and how important it is for women to get involved. You know, it's, it's, it's over 50% of the population, and we need to have that same voice. And with a lot of the things that have been going on lately, I think it's even more important to stress for women, get out there, get involved, know what's going on in your communities, run for office, be a part of the solutions and your community's going forward and improving them, and this was a wonderful day, all about that. I was, I was just so honored to be there with all of them, and Lauren Staley Ferry came with us. It was just such a wonderful day, and I was so thankful. So I, I really, really hope women step up and show their strength this year. It's a great, great opportunity. And I'd also like to congratulate our previous public works directors, we're talking about public works, Paul Burris, who won the American Public Works Association Professional Manager of the Year in Water Resources. What a wonderful coup for him. It's all across the United States, and he won that, so congratulations to him. Thank you.